All right, good evening, everyone. At this time, please silent your cell phones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chambers who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance and presented to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time, but each person is allowed three minutes of speaking time. So, Covenus, regular meeting in the city council for Tuesday, January 10th, 2023, at 6:00 PM. Invocation be given by Pastor Mike Leon from Azure Hill Seven Day Church, the Venice Church, and the pledge allegiance be by Ken Henderson. So if we could please rise for the invocation and stay, remain standing for a pledge allegiance.
Our Lord God, I thank you for those gathered here to do the business of this city. I thank you for caring for this community and for granting to us your peace and your grace. I pray that you give freely and extravagantly of your wisdom, your compassion, and your justice. Thank you for being present here tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
For those of you unfamiliar with the facility, the flag is directly to your left. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Mike, God bless. Thank you Ken Henderson. Okay, AV 2449 to closure. This is just an announcement, legislative bodies not here from remote. And so Madam City Clerk, can we roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
I'm here.
Councilmember Robles.
President.
Mayor Proton Wilson.
Yeah.
I am here.
Oh, I thought you said Mayor Proton Hussey. Let me, let me, oh yeah, let me adjust my hearing aids.
No, it was Mayor Proton Wilson. So Mayor Hussey?
Well, hey, I'm here too. All right.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Okay, so recording additional to or removal of any items from the agenda? Do we have any?
No additions or deletions.
All right, special presentation, installation of officer oath of office appointed official Ken Jeth Henderson. So Henderson, can you come to the podium right there? We're gonna go ahead and bring your lovely wife up there.
Raise your right hand and your left hand on the Bible and repeat. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Kenneth J. Henderson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Then, and that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Councilmember Henderson, you'd like to say a couple of words?
As soon as I sign this document, Mayor, I would, thank you.
Okay, as soon as you sign on a dotted line, you reenlist for two years, so. There's no bonus check either.
Excuse me, wrong document. It looks like it says classified markings, so I'll have to wing it and go to Plan B. I want to thank the council, in particular, and the citizens of Grand Terrace for their support and the congratulations that I've received during my daily walks via texts, telephone calls, and voicemails. I appreciate the council's confidence in me, and I will ensure that your investment in me returns benefits to the community as a whole. I want to thank my parents, both of whom have passed on, Robert and Anna Henderson. Took a drive from Mobile, Alabama in 1950 and wound up in Vallejo, California with their five children. My parents, hard workers, motivators, strong believers in education. Neither of my parents finished high school. All five kids finished college and some graduate school solely because of my parents. So I'm standing here addressing you today because of them. I believe that I bring added value to the city council. The vision that you have in front of you is a vision that I worked on as a city staff person. And so, you know, someone famous once said, "If you don't know where you're going, any road will take you there." So having a vision for this particular community and having the opportunity, from my perspective, to continue to work on that vision is not only exciting, but it's inspirational. Last but not least, I'd like to thank my wife, Cecilia, most amazing person I know. You know, there's a movie out right now. I haven't seen it, I don't know what it's about, but the title of it is Everywhere, All at Once. Excuse me, Everything Everywhere All at Once. And the reason why I bring that to your attention, because that describes kind of my wife's approach to dealing with me. She's everywhere, anywhere, all at once. And it's pretty amazing to see. I've benefited from it for 32 years, and once again, I wouldn't be standing here if it wasn't for her love and support and assistance all these years. So thanks to my wife, thanks to the council and the community. I look forward to serving you, serving you effectively, and working with the council as a group and in unity, in unity. Thank you again, appreciate it.
Before we take a little break, any of the councilmembers have anything to say for Councilmember Henderson? All right, Councilmember Allen.
Oh, don't let me stop you. Welcome, welcome. I just wanted to say welcome again, and the seat is waiting for you, and I personally, and I guess we all, look forward to you filling it.
Well, welcome back. I'm really excited to have you on the team because you bring a wealth of knowledge that's, you know, because I have some ideas and you need to tell me if they can work or not. And, you know, looking at the agenda, I go, where's Ken's name? And then I go, God, we're barely getting to appointing you, so thank goodness, finally, you know, we have you now installed to be with us, finally. Thank you.
You've shown an exemplary attitude in relation to, from the time that you left formal work to doing all the volunteerism that you've been involved in. And I think that's the name of the game of a quality individual. There's no doubt to me. There's so much intelligence to be out there, but it's only there if you open the door. And you strike me as a person that has always been interested in educating himself and will do so right on into the eternity, so congratulations.
Well, Ken, God has a plan. You're part of that plan, buddy. And I know you're ready to roll up your sleeves and continue on what you have been doing in the past, and, you know, I'm looking forward to working with you again, and you never gave up. So, thank you for putting your name in the hat, thank you for coming back on the team, and God bless you and your family. Thank you, Ken. So we're gonna take a five-minute recess, because I know everybody wants to take a picture of Councilmember Henderson, so. You have something else, Ken, you want to say?
I just want to say my beautiful sister just arrived from Northern California. She missed the swearing-in, but she's here for the, for the party.
You want your wife to hold the Bible and we can have Deborah, you know, to do an acting thing for you, or?
We're good, thank you, appreciate it, Mayor.
Well, go ahead and break for five minutes so you can take pictures of your family.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Councilmember Henderson, come on up. Take the hot seat. All right, well, thank you again for everybody coming out. Let's see, we're on item C, consent calendar. The following consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. This is acted upon the city council. At one time without discussion, any councilmember, staff member, or citizen may request the removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Do I have any removals? Oh, I'm sorry.
If I may make an announcement, there was an error on the minutes under the appointment of Councilmember Henderson, and I had the vote inaccurately listed on there, and that has been corrected to reflect the proper vote, and it will be amended for your signature.
Okay. Next time, just yell at me, because you want to start reading, I can't look at. Thank you, Deborah. So do I have any items? Okay. Item three, remove for discussion. Any other items? All right, do I have a motion for one, two, four, and five?
I'll move it.
Hold second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Allen and a second by Councilmember Robles for items one, two, four, and five. City Attorney, you have anything to say? Or, no? All right, please vote.
Motion passes with councilmembers Allen and Robles voting yes, Mayor Proton Wilson voting yes, Mayor Hussey voting yes, Councilmember Henderson has abstained.
Yeah, we'll let him slide on that since he's new. Okay, well, Councilmember Allen.
So, thanks, Mayor. My question, I just have some questions, I'm gonna clear up in my own mind about this item, which is directing the city manager to request a seat for one of our council members as a board member of the Riverside Highland Water Company. So my question is, I'm wondering, is that the way, I guess, let me start with saying, I recall every year getting a ballot in the mail to vote for my representative on the, or a person on the water board. So, is this the way that we get a seat, or is somebody gonna have to run for election? I mean, is every seat an elected seat, or is any seat an appointed seat? And, if it is an elected seat, I mean, I know you had mentioned Mayor Proton Wilson, does that mean he's gonna have to run for election? And so, who pays his, who pays campaign costs, because this is a city seat you're wanting? Or are you the one gonna run and then appoint somebody, because you're the one who does the appointing?
So for clarification, the water board is the San Diego County Water Board, which is different from Riverside Highland Water Company. So the board has an elected seat. The company is the same as any business, they select who their board of directors are with the board members and internally by the shareholders. So I would, I would send a letter to the, to the water company requesting that one of the members from the city council be appointed as a board of director, and it would be up to them to act on it.
So the, so those little ballots I get in the mail are not Riverside Highland Water Company ballots? At my home?
I don't think so. Those are, those are water district, the water. You may get a ballot from the water company internally to vote for their board members, but it's not a county election or where we run for anything.
No, no, I understand that, that's not what I meant. What I meant was, even if it's not a county election, even if it's an internal one, I mean, does, do we get appointed, or do we run for an election?
Then the water company would direct us on how to proceed from there.
Oh, okay, okay.
So what we're trying to do is see if there's any steps we could have a council member on there. And what you're talking about, the proxies and votes on that, and I went to a couple of those, and I actually had residents giving, I had like 200 proxies, but there was no way to, even though 200 proxies weren't enough, because the secretary of the water company had 10,000 proxies, because, you know, everybody gave them their stuff from the new development. So I don't know how that works, you know, I don't know if they put an announcement on their website that, hey, we need board members are coming up, and you want to put your name in there? Or is it just, hey, you want to put it on a board, you know, we'll get you, I don't know how. So we're just looking into it, because I know Mayor Proton was interested in something, since the water company for the county, or whatever got abolished, to see, because I remember at one time, we used to have, get reports on the water company, they used to come here and stuff. We said, hey, how's it going, what about the drought conditions, what's going on here, what projects you got going on? And we don't have anything, so it's just to see if we can, you know, whatever their bylaws, and not stepping on any toes and, you know, forcing our way, but to do it, you know, if we can get, you know, and have an ear for the shareholders, for the residences, so that way somebody on the council could report back to us what's going on with our water company.
I can, I appreciate that, and I can certainly understand it, you know, and respect that. But then again, every shareholder is.
Yeah, so I don't know what, this is just a step, you know, how, how can we do it? If we can do it, can we do it? I don't know. So. Mayor Proton, you have anything to add on that?
My understanding, it is, it is an appointed item, just like our city manager talked about. It's a corporation. So basically, we're talking about, you know, stocks and, and the way corporations run, and, you know, people are appointed to various situations. That's why you don't see anything in there, in the little ballot dealies about a particular name, usually.
Well.
And it's, it's strange, over the time, I've been here for 43 years or something, and it's strange how people just kind of become members of the board, so.
Well, I'm, I'm not against it or anything like that, don't get me wrong, what I'm saying is, is I just, I, every corporate board that I've been familiar with, they, they were elected to it. But we'll see, I just think that, I just, maybe if we're just finding out how we go about getting it, that's fine.
It's to start the process.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it, I just wanted to, the reason I pulled it was just to get clarif, if anybody had any clearer information on it. So I'll move item three.
All right, before we do that, the city attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just looking online at their website, it is a nonprofit corporation. There are nine seats available, board seats. I think three are elected every year. It doesn't specify what the procedure is or what the qualifications are to be a board member, but I think the purpose of this agenda item, as I understand it, and speaking with the city manager, is really just to explore what the city's options are in placing a city council member as a board member, and then reporting back to see what we can do, if anything.
With that said, Mr. City Manager, is the item, could the item be worded, item three be worded better, or is it worded the best way possible for what we're at, what we're wanting?
I'm sure it could be worded better.
I mean, because if, if, are we requesting a seat, or are we requesting information on how to obtain a seat?
You're directing me to work with the water company to get, get somebody on the board, a commission, a seat on the board, through whatever mechanism we have to do.
So do you want to change your motion to?
No, no, I moved it already, you just need a second now to.
Councilman Henderson or Councilman Robles, you have anything to add?
I'll second.
Okay, let's hold on a second.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that we're a shareholder. All of us residents are shareholders, the city's a shareholder. So we need to explore why there isn't open elections, if there isn't an open election when you're a shareholder, how that also operates.
Thank you. Okay, well, we have a first and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes with councilmembers Allen, Robles, Mayor Proton Wilson, and Mayor Hussey voting yes, Councilmember Henderson has abstained.
All right, well, thank you. So we'll move to item D, public comment. This is opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or asked questions for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during the public comment, or request the matter be agendized for future meetings. So do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mayor, we have Kristin Scott as your first speaker.
Ms. Scott.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I am Kristine Scott, Senior Public Affairs Manager for SoCalGas, and we have been spending the last couple of months reaching out to our customers, letting them know that unfortunately customers may be experiencing higher than normal natural gas bills due to unprecedented, unprecedented factors beyond our control. The high gas bills are a result of historically high natural gas prices in the western United States. SoCalGas doesn't set the price for natural gas, instead, natural gas prices are set and determined by the national regional markets. SoCalGas buys natural gas in those markets on behalf of our residential and small business customers, and the cost of buying that gas is billed to those customers with no markup, meaning SoCalGas does not profit from gas commodity prices going up. According to the U.S. Energy Information Administration, a number of factors are contributing to higher natural gas commodity prices. They include widespread below-normal temperatures on much of the west coast, including Oregon and Washington, high natural gas demand for heating by customers in areas with below-normal temperatures, reduced, reduced natural gas supplies to the west coast from Canada and the Rocky Mountains, reduced interstate pipeline capacity to the west coast because of pipeline maintenance in West Texas, and low natural gas storage levels on the west coast. We have been trying to help our customers reduce their energy bills by conserving on their energy use with natural gas, either by lowering their thermostat three to five degrees if the health permits, wash clothes in cold water, and reduce the temperature on the water heater. Lowering the temperature on a water heater or setting it at 120 degrees can save up to 22% in energy costs. And then we also suggest limiting the use of non-essential gas appliances such as spas, pool heaters, and fireplaces. And all this information is on our SoCalGas.com website. I will also be emailing you a one-pager that has this information in case customers or residents don't have access to the internet. We are also offering ways to help income-employed customers qualify through bill assistance and forgiveness programs, home improvement assistance, and level pay program. We just announced a $1 million contribution to the Gas Assistance Fund, a program that helps income-qualified customers pay their natural gas bills. And again, all this information is on our website, and that gas bill is a $100 one-time grant, I'm sorry, up to $100 to help customers get back on track with their gas bills. And if they call the gas company, we'll work with them, we'll find payment plans, we'll work with the customers to make sure that we can get them through this winter season. So we're here to help. It's, it's, again, we take pride in being the lowest natural gas, lowest utility bill, so right now, this is just, this is a shock to us as it is to our customers, but hopefully we can help them get through this winter season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Bobby Forbes.
Thank you, good evening. I would like to thank staff for putting the silver markers or reflectors on Grand Terrace Road by the Mobile Home Park. I don't know if they're working yet, but people are noticing them, and if you can get them on the other side of the street, that would be great, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, we have Shad Bull.
Hello, Shad, I'm Maryam Way here in Grand Terrace. Just here to let you guys know, if you don't know, that Grand Terrace has a pretty big honor this weekend as far as our soccer goes. We are having the Tournament of Champions that normally is in Temecula. You are going to see a large influx of people in Grand Terrace. There'll be games at Richard Rollins Park Saturday and Sunday, and at the high school. We have our number, our U-10 girls team who've done absolutely phenomenal. Come out, support them, come visit, and get prepared, because there's gonna be some people here. That's all I gotta say.
Yeah, Ken, we have one question, one clarification going. Shad, for you.
Hey, thanks for, thanks for bringing that to our attention. Is this a tournament of some sort, like a?
Yeah, this is a, a major soccer tournament. Grand Terrace Soccer won the ability to have a tournament this weekend, and I hadn't seen a whole lot of things, but I figured, I've been on the soccer board eons ago, probably should let more people know, would say, hey, there's gonna be more influx of people from outside the neighborhood. I know Grand Terrace has a tendency of going, hey, this car doesn't belong in this neighborhood, hey, that's someone different. Well, you're gonna see probably a lot of different this weekend.
And, and we have, do we have any Grand Terrace teams playing, participating?
Yes, we do.
All right, right on, right on.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody go out there, root them on.
All right.
Thanks, Shad.
I have one question, too, for you. Do you have a website where we could see when the games, what time the games and who's playing?
I believe that is gonna be on the Grand Terrace Soccer website. I will obviously have to check with my wife, because she's the one who's pretty good at all that. So I just said, hey, I need to let you guys know and kind of give you guys some heads up.
I don't know if they could forward that to the city manager or city clerk to put on our city Facebook site with the games?
I will text my wife and have her contact the board and see what they can do for you.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck. All right, no more public comments?
No more, Mayor.
All right, so we'll close that, and we'll go to public hearings none and finish business none, new business none. Item H, I'm gonna pull that, I'm, I'm not gonna ask for counsel, I'm just gonna, so request for future agenda items, so we're gonna have none, I'm just gonna pull it, and city council communications. So we'll start with Councilmember Kenneth Henderson. Do you have anything to say, Ken?
I think I've said most of what I wanted to say this evening. Just thanks again to the council, to the community, to my wife, and to my family. I'm looking forward to the job at hand and looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. On the 19th, I went to the Muni Water Forum for Division One, and the things that I'm bringing back from that, which I feel are important for us, are, first of all, the reason I went there is because if, none of you have noticed or not, if you look on your tax bill, you're gonna see that everybody pays money to the municipal water district on their property tax bill, and so, you know, that's one agency I think that maybe we should be, you know, sitting in on and reporting back to. So I go there every time so that I can tell the residents what they're, what they're up to. And the first news from them is that they've changed their name from the Municipal Water District, the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District. The new name is the San Bernardino Valley Regional Water Agency. Okay? That's, now, the, this particular water forum, the subject that they discussed this time was wastewater recovery and trends in, you know, processing the wastewater. And one of the information speakers, one of the information sessions there had to do with drought-proofing the water supply along the Santa Ana River, the upper Santa Ana River, which we have a section of that, a very short section of the Santa Ana River that sort of borders along our city down, you know, that, down below the trailer storage yard and at the end of Terrace Avenue. and at the end of Terrace Avenue. And so, that's very close to our city. And that whole region is going through a $2 billion project to improve the recharging of the aquifer through, and they're going to add 37 or 377 acres of storage, above-ground storage, to recharge the aquifers downstream from this little location right outside of our city down, going into Riverside. So, that will ensure a water supply for the wildlife and the people along the Santa Ana River that use it. The Big Bear, the city of Big Bear is recharging the Santa Ana River by spending about $75 million on a water purification plant that they're going to put back into the lake. And we talked about how the government is checking our wastewater for all kinds of things like drugs and viruses and illnesses. And they're tracking where those come from by checking the wastewater. I thought it was very, very interesting whenever I learned, and they've been doing that all through the pandemic, you know, in different various cities around here. I'm sure that they checked ours, too, down there in Colton. The next thing I want to tell you about is, and this is real quick, but it's very important. This is for our veteran community. We have a large veteran community here in Grand Terrace, and I really respect them, want to reach out to them. I'm the chairperson of the San Bernardino County Veterans Advisory Committee. And we had our meeting yesterday. And the two important things, or the most important thing I want our veteran community to know is that the new PACT Act signed into law, P-A-C-T, the PACT Act, and this will greatly increase the, expands the healthcare and the benefits for veterans of all eras and all conflicts in combat. And what it does is it adds pages and pages and pages of presumptive illnesses to the list of presumptive illnesses already that veterans are. And so, you know, Agent Orange, burn pits, I mean, if, veterans from Iraq, Afghanistan, veterans from the Gulf War earlier than that, veterans from Vietnam, all these, this PACT Act, P-A-C-T Act, increases the benefits and for survivors of those veterans, too, you know, the spouses and the dependents. So, I encourage our veterans to contact the San Bernardino County Veterans Affairs Office, and they can square you away on every benefit that you're entitled to. And they have all that information on that. And the last thing I want to talk about is, and I mean, we would have to be, have our heads buried in the sand to not know that the top news story the past few days has been all the mass shootings that have been going on around the state of California, and not just California, but all of the United States. It's sadly, we can't say that it's unique because it happens every day, all day long. The same day that the 11 people in Monterey Park were killed, there were two mass shootings in Louisiana, and the next day, there was two mass shootings again in California. They don't tell you about the one in Oakland because only one person killed, not a whole bunch of people, but about eight other people got shot. So, there's just so much violence. Now, I don't want to sit here and debate about, you know, gun laws. I'm beyond that. That's a lost argument. But what I started when I first got elected, and I want to reinforce that again, now is the time for us to look again at the Stop the Bleed Program offered by the American College of Surgeons. The, we, we, we can't get the guns out of their hands, but we can save lives with the Stop the Bleed Program. These are trauma kits that are placed throughout public buildings, and they're readily available, and they're not hidden away. They're right out in the open, they're right in the entrances and everywhere throughout public buildings. I was advocating for this ever since I got elected. And just so you know, on September 27, Governor Newsom signed into law Assembly Bill 2260. Assembly Bill 2260 requires all public and private buildings to have these emergency response trauma kits installed in newly constructed public and private buildings throughout the state beginning January 1 of this year. And so, I just think that now that we have a law that says we have to do it, I think that's the baseline. That's the minimum, okay? But we can do better than that. We can, we can really enhance this program for Grand Terrace residents to make sure that our buildings have and are safe and that, that residents can get the training that they need to be able to apply tourniquets and to use the wound packing material that are in these kits. Youth groups are the primary teachers of this course. And so, I would encourage the youth of our community to reach out and let's get involved. If there's a Boy Scout or a Girl Scout troop that's looking for a project, this is a great project to bring to the community and teach our family members and our children how to survive and for, to the next day and grow and be productive citizens and not end up like, well, like what happened recently. So, those are the three things I wanted to talk about. And I really want to bring this Stop the Bleed Program to our, back to our city, the city manager and fellow council members. I mean, I think we can, if we can save lives, you know, I don't want to talk about gun control, but we can sure save lives with this program. It's been shown to, to work. So, thanks a lot for listening.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Councilman Robles?
Yes, I got appointed to a committee for, with Southern California Associated Governments. And I had to write it down because it's so new to me. It's a Committee on Economic and Community Economic and Human Development. And last week, since my appointment was after they had invited everyone, I got a call and email to attend a field trip to the California Air Resources Board in Riverside. It was quite a lengthy and detailed tour. It was really fascinating to see where they test all the vehicles. And so, I imagine as I get more and more into that, I'll understand what my charge is and get more involved in that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. There is a move afoot. It seems so miraculous because I remember 20 years ago, or at least that long, there were discussions about water, you know, the way to get water from the ocean down through the areas that are near San Francisco and the Delta, and then bring it down, you know, to us and, and all the rest of that jazz. Anyway, I was working for a land developer at that point that, who was stationed up there. And he owned a piece of property up in the Frisco Bay that was going to be affected by what they called a diversion plan. And that's because there's been an environmental finding that there are two-inch, two-inch smelts that the way our current mechanization is, the water comes through pumps to get down through the Delta. And because of the way the pumps work, apparently, nobody's been able to figure out, although I think a Chinese did it about 1,600 years ago, to figure out how not to beat up the smelt as the pump grinds through these things and tries to roll the water through. So, what they were doing was they were coming up with this diversion plan so that there would not be any pumps involved. It was called the Delta Diversion Plan, which is a working title. Now, that was 20 years ago. The new move that is afoot is, has to do with the fact that we need new plumbing to handle megastorms because we get all this water and some of the water just goes down the drain. And so, there are some things that are happening, and one of those is the Sites Reservoir. And we were talking about water abilities, and we did belong to the Western Municipal Water District, San Bernardino Western Municipal Water District, until they decided to abolish advisory committees from all of the cities. And I'm sure it was a cost-saving measure or whatever. But since then, there have been presentations put on about once a quarter by the water district. And because I used to attend all of those things, I thought, hey, you know, why not? So, I did attend the same agenda and Division One Water Forum on January 19 that Councilwoman Allen did. And the first portion of that thing was, was really exciting. And that's because a, a member of their board, a member of their staff traveled to Israel and watched how Israel handles water. Now, if you think about Israel, it's dry as a bone. I mean, they had pictures showing the areas. And you're talking, if you've ever read Frank Herbert books or the movie and, and saw Dune, the planet, believe me, Israel's worse off than that. I mean, we're talking nothing but sand anywhere. But what they do is they basically use a skill suit sort of mechanism where everything that even drops on that, you know, prairie land ends up being recycled, and it goes into their system. And I was, I was extremely excited with the idea that, as they put it, in-use drives source supply and treatment. So, you can imagine the water comes in, not very little of it. Some places, some areas get maybe an inch a year at the most. Then they treat the water according to the demand. So, in essence, what they do is they have wastewater treatment plants, and that also includes, you know, industrial waste and so on. And then, they create these conditions where they only treat the water to the extent that they need it to be able to do a particular thing. And their, I guess you'd call it kind of their default, is they have desalinization. And they've got a huge product of desalinization. That's where we fall down. We don't have, at least at this point, there have been a few popcorn ideas out there. They've been playing with it now for six decades, you know, besides my 20 years that I know about it. And we don't have sufficient desalinization plants to provide source water to then recycle that water and then make the whole program work. And so, I, I was jazzed. In, in all of that, it reminded me of the fact that the Sites Reservoir, which has been tremendously funded by what used to be known as the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District, is now getting closer and closer to fruition. And that is an area up in the Imperial Valley area. And it's a combination of water that would sit up maybe as low as four feet off the, off the ground. And then, a lot of it would be storage water that would be underground because the storage medium exists, the rock, gravel, base, and so on. You know, it takes, somebody spits on the sidewalk and it dribbles down onto the, into the dirt, and it takes 40 years for that water to get down into the, into the water basin. Fortunately, that Sites Reservoir is, is making some headway, and there's been lots of funding, and they hope to be moving on that Sites Reservoir. It is going to, it's going to create a tremendous basin for exactly the problem that we think we kind of halfway conquered with this last, you know, bunch of rains. And it's going to be especially important because the Colorado River isn't getting the kind of refreshment yet that you would anticipate from, you know, the north storms and so on. So, the Colorado River is still in bad shape. And, you know, a lot of people depend on those Colorado River sources. And a lot of the agriculture activities are looking forward to having to, are not looking forward to it. They have to. They're going to have to cut their water demand by 10%. Doesn't sound like a lot, but agricultural basically eats about 70 and maybe 80% of the water that's used in the state. 10% of it is residential. Another 10% is maybe commercial and industrial. And then, a bunch of miscellaneous makes up the difference. But 70 to 80% is agricultural. So, when we start to starve our agricultural water demands, it is a big deal. There's no question about it. So, I was, I was entertained and at the same time mystified why it took, it's taken so long to get there. But then, we know what happens with the wheels of government. And then, also, I was, your Councilwoman Allen was talking about how they, they, the agencies have been contacted by various entities within the government to determine what kind of things are going in the water. And it's, and it felt a little bit like 1984 where you could realistically determine what areas were using more drugs. You could determine where there were more COVID situations or flu or anything you want. They will test the water for that particular area and then bring it back and say, here, just like they test the water for levels on these backflow valves where we have large irrigated areas, the same situation, only, you know, they made a business out of doing that. It's really interesting to see how, at one point, they used to make tests. And the tests from 1939, when they first started doing that, went to about 2,000. It was almost flat. From 2,000 to current day, it went stratospheric, the number of tests that are being produced. Yeah, yeah, your poop will tell on you. I like that sound. Yeah, it's exactly right. I mean, it really, it's out there, and, and it's a little scary. Anyway, that's what I had, other than the fact that I am going to be interviewing tomorrow as our JAPIA representative for an executive board application or appointment. And, you know, trying for a little bit of luck on that. It's, there's about six people that have also expressed interest all the way up and down the state. So, my interview is at 2:30. We'll see what happens. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Well, thank you. You guys talk about all this water. I'm getting thirsty now.
Yeah.
So, just got a couple of things. Thank you for, Scott, for coming out for Southern California and gas. You know, like everybody who got their bill this month, you know, it's like, first my wife had to get me off the ground after I opened it. Yeah, it is costly. And then, I, I know that a lot of people are on fixed incomes and stuff, so hopefully, they will, you know, somebody will look at that site to help them, the way, cost of everything going right now. They don't need anybody that, you know, that really needs the heat to cut down if they could help it, you know? So, thank you for coming out. Another thing, debit cards are still being mailed out if on a middle-class tax relief. But I've been hearing we're going to get a lot of mail thefts. I don't know if that's true or not, but this is the scuttlebutt that I'm hearing. That's old Marine Corps saying, you know, that's the rumor that I'm hearing. So, so please check your mail. I know when I walk in the morning or something, I will see mailboxes, you know, like a whole block open.
Try your luck, see if there's any chicks.
See if there's any chicks. And once again, the yard sale signs are a little crazy. I, I know it's a little pet peeve, but it always got to me, especially when I seen a yard sale sign in the middle of a stop sign. That's when we stopped this. We have a program for it. So, you know, please, you can have yard sales in Grand Terrace. Just come by the city and, you know, pay your $5 and get your signs and you get your other deposit back. But a lot of things, people don't pick up the yard sale signs where they have a business in their yard all the time. And, you know, be cognizant of your neighbors, so, you know, watch out for that. But it's, one other thing, just, what, Councilman Allen? I, I thought the council put that for a future agenda item for the Stop the Bleed. We'll have to look into that. I think we, we looked into that, so can we look into that again for that program? So, that's all I have. So, City Manager, do you have any communications you would like to?
Well, I didn't until just now. So, actually, with the Stop the Bleed Program, we're working with the Fire Department on the training for that, for city staff to get that in our buildings, our vehicles, along with AEDs in our vehicles. And then, we'll, we'll work with the community groups to expand that. So, Councilman Allen did come up with a brilliant idea of incorporating the, the service groups as part of that, and we'll work with the Fire Department as part of that. So, we're looking forward to get that done. Thank you.
Okay, so, we're going to go in a closed session. It's conference of Labor Negotiations Pursuit of Government Code, Section 54957.6. So, when we come back and you're not So when we come back, and you're not here, we understand. I don't know how long we'll be in there, but I want to wish everybody a good night. City Attorney, do you have anything to add before we go into closed session? All right, so we're going to go in closed session, and then we'll reconvene to open session. Thank you for coming out tonight, and God bless. All right, we'll go ahead and reconvene, closed session for Conference for Labor Negotiators Pursuit of Government Code, Section 54957.6. Staff was given direction on that. City Attorney, you have anything to add? No? All right. So the next regular City Council meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 14, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. Any requests to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and a request will process in accordance with the council procedures. That's it. Everybody have a good night.